All right, we're gonna start off with rezone 215 Faulkner Way. We talked about this last one from R2 to R3. Eric, you already looked at concerns, you don't have any?
No.
So, they have both the rezone. So, those with McKee? That's second. Name of Kevin Dale and the other question or discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious. Okay, Department of Business, Will?
We have a few things that I'll build very quick. We've got some pay requests for the Marshall County gas project. If you can, I'd like to look at numbers 1, 2, 3, and 5, all of them related to that. Number 1 is where Free Rivers has sent the grant money back to us. Number 2 is paying UVA construction for their work this past month. 3 is $4,000 in add-in fee. We have to pay the Free Rivers for getting the grant, the industry reports. And then 5, Cook County pay request, we need to work on that project.
We do that while I'm working, but I'll six, seven minutes. Okay. Oh, how y'all want to do? We got 1, 2, 3. 1 is approved request for cash from Marshall County. That's request cash for $26,000. 2 is the pay request from Marshall County yet for UVA's construction for $2,000. 3 is pay Free Rivers forward. 5 is approved pay request for Cook County for $8,000. You had a one with Johnny, you had a second, you kicked out Amy. Any other questions or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
And that probably gives it a little better way of now, of course, the weather impacted early in the year, but we're getting, we started the second half of the main work going from kind of Faulkner Way to the Bethany Churches toward Pox Town. That's going nicely. The contractor will talk about it in just a couple of minutes. It's Mid-South Ford. They started work on the gate station. Kinder Morgan completed their work and now this contractor. And this, most of the stuff they're doing is already fabricated by somebody else. Once all that is ready to assemble, we're not taking long for the station to get together. And then the third part is the service work and that contractor should begin in August, running the services up to the house. So, our goal is to get everything done up there in early part of November before the heat and season starts. And we're gonna be, we're gonna be really close. We'll have, most of them will have it up there, everybody will have it before the season starts. Second thing I have, actually, it's either 4 or 10 list. And this is regarding our sewer improvement project. You know, we've got the hetero financing set up and we're approved through USDA, start spending some funds on that project. We have to set up a separate bank account, so we'll keep that money separate from just our general accounts, we have it like gas water. And I guess thank you all, we've got some new banking regulations. They may need the board to approve the people, I guess, who can sign the checks. And typically, these are the ones, the ones we have listed on here, the people who can sign the checks. That's myself, the mayor, Sherry Osmond, her office manager, Kristi Davis is our council table person. And this is how all the other councils set up, but this is just the first time they've asked for signature on this.
And most of Kevin Dale, second, but Will, you have a question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
Shifting down to number 6. I mentioned the contract to build the gate station, get to supply, to connect Kinder Morgan Pipeline to supply the gas up there. We awarded that to Mid-South Ford a couple of months before the meeting. Actually, we awarded the contract. Kinder Morgan came back and changed the requirement for something at the station. They basically, we got four more concrete, great bigger footprint there. And that was out of the original bid specs. We had to go back and add that in to the, had to go back and add that in to the, to the contract for Mid-South Ford. And that changed orders in the amount of $4,197. So, that's that original contract was $568,000, 8.22. And the new contract, what I would do, 568,024.
Most of Johnny, have a second. Will, any other question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
And then the number 7 on the list is approved pay request for Mid-South Ford for $33,362.47. So, that's what they're working with their last one, gate station side.
You had a motion, Will, second, Amy. You have a question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
Yeah, and all these pay requests, Cook County, any areas handling inspection and making sure that everything's done based on the bid specs and that the money's right. So, we have people there as well, but we really rely on them to make sure that all the money is, you know, what we're paying is actually being put into bills and then could be whatever all that. I do have a couple more items. Two, three months ago, y'all gave me the authority to advertise for a new, what we call line truck or a dicker truck. And we were trying to see if we, I think we had said an online auction to actually buy that. We're checking on some different options. I don't think we have any options other than to do the online auction, which is fine. But when we go to the new truck route, it takes a year to a year and a half to actually, yes, that's not necessarily a fault of the bid process, just to order the chassis and then to send it off and get the bed, but on, it just takes a long time. We may have the ability to buy a dillo type truck, you know, a fairly new truck, low hours, low miles, that will work for us. It's still something to have to spec out and advertise, but if we could buy a dillo unit instead of a brand new, and we can get it in a couple of months instead of having one a year and a half. And I guess what I, what I'd like to is get authority to advertise, to spec out and advertise a dillo truck, yeah, dillo truck, and then to give, when the bids come back in, maybe if they even spend online auction, we've got, after the purchase, just do an advertising.
You had a motion, Amy, do you have a second? Second, Will, you have a question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
And the last item I have, we're just gonna hire a couple of folks for the way we're going to, one is Kenneth Keys and the other is going to have to pay for the gates.
They going to ride with?
Yes, sort of, the vehicle, electric, with the ride with it.
You had a motion with Johnny, you have a second. Name was Key. You have a question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Community of fellow.
I mail everyone my monthly report, but I do have a new request to add an addendum to the social media policy of the city now. Tracy and I are beginning to get weekly requests, multiple weekly requests to promote other events and businesses that are not part of the city on our social media side. And we just think this event needs to be added, that everything that we post should be about the city, the city's mission, and events, meetings, activities, the public needs to know. But if it doesn't mean anything to the city, then we can honestly say it's against policy. So, I'm just requesting.
I got a motion, Amy, have a second. Name McKee. You have a question or discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Most of them curious. Anybody here? Part 3.
We got two items. We have a request, we have a young man going to leave us to go to college, and I'd like to request that we hire Allen, U.B. position.
I got a motion by Amy, have a second. You have a question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
My second request is about acquiring some leechers. I got two quotes. I got one from Adventury Connection for $11,295. That's for six sets, six sets of leechers, four rows. And I got one from BSN, we did most of our payments for $9,000, $30.
And it needs to replace current?
Current, and just try to get some more here. Try to just upgrade some of these other leechers.
Low fit, maybe I should go for the lower.
Okay, most of my answers were most being, have a second. Second, Will, you have a question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious. All right, Police Department.
First, I think you and Frankie got an email about we haven't awarded the traffic safety grant this year in an amount of $17,988. And we just need to accept that if all is needed.
All right, who wants to make a motion except they can, uh, Key? Got a motion McKee, second, Amy. Any other question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
Second item is, we could fill up position patrol vision through Roland Yarber from Park Town for full time. Make that a question, Will.
Who is it?
Roland Yarber.
You had a motion by Amy, second, Will. You have a question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious. Fire Department, Frank, does it include? You're the man. Brief and entertaining, brief and entertaining.
You should have two quotes there in your packet. We finally got some hammered down here on the system upgrades and repair down there. The low bid for each one of those combined would be from E5. They bid, well, their estimated bid is $10,246.33 on the prepared, oh, excuse me, $35. And then on the add is $13,894.79. So, that's a total of $24,141.14. The other bid was $28,010 to do both bids. So, the low bidder is E5.
And the add is for the, what, the annex?
No, no, the annex is the, whenever back then. Yeah.
Steve, what was the name of the low bidder again?
E5.
Where's the money, which, where's it coming from, from the budget?
From the service center.
From the service center.
Will, Kevin Dale, I have a second, Amy. You have a question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
So, actually, we had a meeting with this company a couple of weeks back, just to make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page. Once this starts, we're not gonna ask them to drain and bring up, drain and bring up this system every day to avoid problems, so they can finish the bid. Now, I think what they're gonna try to do, the way they hooked, is go ahead and do the adds, and they'll give a few days to get all of that done, and then they'll kill it and make the repairs.
They actually like to do it pretty timed, to manage it.
What is so big of the add? Is it September?
28, 28, last weekend, September.
September, that's what.
Okay, September.
Yes, I could love it if they were talking about the other day, about having the curtains in place for some kind of, I don't think it's the other day, three.
The Union County play, the school play, I don't know, that is, that was.
Hopefully, but he taught like, what, it takes two weeks probably for them to get it started? So, that stuff starting looks like maybe a week and a half or two weeks, and they're hoping it's a couple of weeks to get it going. So, you know, we hope the end of August 1st, we can follow that, make the board any problem. It's the best we can do.
Thank you. All right, Eric, just like you will.
We had a zoning meeting, a request from Sam Creek 4603, South Central Avenue, for approval of the 24 lot plan, and we didn't develop the subdivision. It was approved.
But that was on.
Had a request from the Enhanced LLC, mustard drive, the south of the first tax building, for various and societal requirements. It was approved. That's that shale building, county, that county's. Request from Bobby Owens on 415 Oxford Road to rezone from R3 to C2. It was approved. Request from the Stanford 415 Murray Road for a side yard setback fence. It was approved. And then we had a request from 13 to rezone the property located off of Popery from R2 to C4. The Hummer withdrew his request last night. And to set a public hearing for the September 3rd to rezone 415 Oxford Road from R3 to C4.
You had a motion with Johnny, I have a second, Amy. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious.
What about the September 3rd?
Uh, it's correct. Okay, let's move into general city business. Item A is approval of a bridge of plane docked for UI 19.
Most of Kevin Dale, have a second. Second, McKee, any other question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I had, I had two that I had concerns with, I'll approve, although they're pretty good. 140022 and 1402221. I'll go against those.
You want to vote for the plane diving, except those two? What are all those two like? Kevin Dale made a motion. Key second, and everybody voting against him. So, that's except those two.
So, Kevin, now you want to amend your motion to that? Walk us through, where were you? What were the two?
One was the L2 Creek 4, and the other was a sprinkler for the trees, TRS 995.
So, what's the deal with the sprinklers for the trees? Is that on the dock? Every month?
I have, I have. Will, keep tricking me.
Labor, I don't know what it's.
Oh, it's labor, what is it?
For what was it, last?
Materials.
Materials and then life? And they're not even, you look at life? They don't know what they're doing. They're kind of like strolling all over the place. It's like they're not serving the purpose.
There's some, does that thing, are they not?
Yeah, they drill, things drill for your gaze. I don't understand that, but if you look at them, they're like, it's like they, almost like they ran over them or what? Anyway, we need to, we need to look at it, because if they're, I'm okay with what they're, they're, they're purpose, but not really know that we're using them. Because they're just kind of scattered all over. But anyway.
Okay. Oh, you already, did that one all except those two? Still on second?
So, we're remending it without those two?
Remending without those two. All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious. For the planes docked, except those two. Now, we'll go back to those two. Then most approved, those other two. I think we just left that. Some, you have a motion McKee, do you have a second?
Wait a minute, question.
We didn't approve those two.
I know, but can't we check, check, we gotta check into this, right? We need to make sure they're being used with their.
Well, I mean, it doesn't.
So, we're already paid it.
All right. But we need to figure out if we're gonna.
Is this a NASA thing, though, that needs to talk about this at their meeting? Or, identification, yeah, okay. We'll just make sure it's on there, just, okay.
I'll get a part that's.
Oh, not you, Will. Okay, we got a motion, Kevin Dale, those two, we got a second?
Yeah. Or Key, no, Key made the motion. Who's gonna go second? All right. Any other question or discussion on those two? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Move item B is approved June the 4th, 29 minutes. And most with Johnny, have a second. Will, any other question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious, June 5th, 29 minutes. Most of Amy, do you have a second? Kevin Dale, any other question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Will, second. Next one is Kevin Dale. Johnny, will you? Did ring an interruption?
I did.
All right, let's go to item D. It's to approve the two out of second, 29 minutes. Most of Johnny, do you have a second? Second, McKee. Any other question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious. Item A is authority to publish notice of public hearing on the budget year 9/2020 for this year. All right, I got a motion, Amy, do you have a second? Second, Will. Any other question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious. Item A is to approve the school board appointment.
I'm gonna, did we point Mark Garrett?
I've got a motion for Mark Garrett, I have a second. Second, Kevin Dale. Any other question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most of them curious. All right. Item G is to open bids for cemetery maintenance. I think we got three bids, maybe? Oh, four.
Question is, TNT Law Services, Tim Taylor, $45,000. Praise it. Tim Taylor. This one's Steve Hall, same as I said. And it's the same one. One beady with another. Last one is Mike Brown with All Imagine Services. Mustard bid around $39. That's what that for? So, we have three times.
I like a motion to take one of those. You have one to take those last second, but Key, you have a question or discussion? All in favor? You want to ask a question?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask a question. Is, when we take it under advisement, can we find out, like, more about experience and what else they do and all that? Is that how we look to do it?
I'm gonna look up what our offices are. Obviously, we always can choose most of the best. So, if you take, make a determination what is best from, you know, some stated reasons, you can choose the best. But I'll try and give you some more information on that maybe tomorrow. But, what they say about time, time is.
Are there any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? We'll take it under advisement. You might keep up. Yeah, the Census Bureau called and wants us to phone a committee, Census Bureau committee. So, I guess we need to prove that, you know, if y'all can come up with someone that you want to recommend. What's that, the governor, this, this for taking this? They're trying to get a lot of people involved, and I think the problem is, they're not getting enough employees. You know, they pay $14,000 a month.
They want the city to take on what the federal government's failing to do.
Right. So, they haven't had much luck, given them workers.
County told us all.
Did it? Okay. She just called and made that request.
They also want you to purchase a motor vehicle, I make.
She didn't make tonight. That might be the next night. And I think what they're really shooting for is to help, us to help them get workers. They have that much luck. They will go out to half a house, pay the taxes. The last 10 years ago, they just, they wanted to bury that town. They're calling the league. And the problem will be this by the league, but they're gonna make an epic deal going nowhere else, by the way.
Yeah, you can come up with some type of people.
By next one, no, no, by next one, okay. Anyway, it's more of a young people here, they're questioning. Okay, no, they don't, highway therapy, so. Municipal court clerk's training certificate. Just a, okay. Municipal court clerk's training certificate, just a, okay. And Mosley, Will, second, Kevin Dale, any other question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And then, uh.
Tim, I want to, I want to back to the cemetery bids, a couple of bids have details of what they intend to do, a couple.
We should probably make a copy for everybody to look at, so they're all, y'all can compare to others.
Yeah, 'cause they're all different.
Can we go back and ask?
What I'm saying is, is I don't want, I want the bids to show what their intention is to do, and stuff like that, but hopefully you can tell them that, and I have a point.
Well, we'll have a counter.
Well, of course, you've always got the specs to work in our app, those, those specs are, but I need to look more closely at both of those things.
Right. Well, we'll discuss it, I mean, we can discuss it and then call, we, we.
But that heads what they're supposed to do in a phase. And then they'll sign a contract, well.
Right, but their bids, it looks like they're not for different.
All right, item L is considered executive session. And we just don't, we need to do an executive session, 'cause these people don't know what, don't want us to know what to ask us for this piece of property. So anyway, it's considered executive session. And Mosley, Johnny, second, any other question or, all in favor? Any opposed? Mosley care, it's that.